While we're waiting, good evening everyone. Thank you for attending this evening's meeting. To reduce any and all unnecessary disservices, please place your devices on silent, vibrate, or off setting. Additionally, if you would like to speak on any agenda item, please complete assistance and participation. In order to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum in this public meeting, please prepare for any remarks or actions that are disruptive or intended to be slanderous, obscene, offensive, threatening, and cycloning by any means. Any speaker purposely failing to comply with the above will be invited to observe the remainder of the meeting via live stream. It is 7:31, February 21st, 2023. We are now beginning the regular council meeting, the regular council meeting for the historic county meeting bill. Mrs. King, do we have a quorum?
Um, yes, we do.
We have a quorum, please stand for the Integrité and Cyclones.
Let us pray. Father and God, we thank you once again for this day that you have made. We will continue to even rejoice and be glad in it. We once again approach with thanking you for this community of Eatonville that you have placed us there in to be stewards and residents in representation of this community, oh God. We thank you for the administration, the mayor, the councilmen, those who work intimately and directly for this community. We intend to continue to bless them, continue to give them the discretion and determination to make decisions that will be beneficial and advantageous for this community. We thank you for each resident of Eatonville that you continue to bless us, to live in harmony and unity with one another, again, to respect each other's personalities as well as properties. We thank you again for this town council meeting that we can further be educated and updated on the state and welfare of this, our community. We thank you for what you're doing in, through, and for Eatonville, whereas you continue to bless it and keep it, cause your face to shine upon it, be gracious unto it, lift up your countenance upon it, and give it your peace. We honor you and we thank you again for all things, we ask you this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the approval of the, um, agenda with the amendments for the, the reports, for the interim administrative office report.
Number two, move down to council's decision.
All in faith, uh, there's a motion, it's a motion to move number two down to council decisions. Well, actually, I was looking in a ordinance and it says that we do.
So move.
It's been moved to a second.
Right.
Second, move to a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Any other changes? Alright, so the, do I need to rescind the motion?
Um, was there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
With amendments.
With the amend, okay, then you can withdraw that motion.
Okay, withdraw that motion.
And move to, with, uh, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Alright, so I moved to, I withdraw the original motion, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Aye.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, all opposed? No opposed. Citizen participation.
Yes, we have five. The first one came by way of email, and I'll read that. James Benderson, topic is the Integrity Group contract. Dear mayor and town council, for the record, I object to the Integrity Group's proposed contract. This proposed contract needs to be carefully evaluated. There wasn't a copy of their reference state contract that allows the company to skip the former bid process. Seemingly, this contract is essentially up to $2 million for three years with option for two to one year renewals. The mayor and town council should consider requesting proposals for this scope of work. The town administration should make hiring competent staff a priority instead of spending excessive amounts of money on general consultant firms. The company also didn't seem to include professional references to accompany their contract. Please reject this contract and be it out of scope of work to get a better buy for the taxpayers' money. It would also be helpful to provide the fiscal impact of such a contract. As a follow-up to last month, please provide an update on where the town is with processing through establishing, in establishing town impact fees. And our second citizen participation would be Ryan Novak.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council, citizens. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. So the first item that I wanted to discuss is for Ms. King. I know that today we livestreamed via Facebook Live. There was one, I guess, special meeting that you guys had to move from Thursday to do something on a Thursday. I wasn't able to come and make that one, so I attempted to go to the Facebook Live and I was met with a login wall. I do not have Facebook. Zuck may not have my data. So, I, maybe others, I don't know, may not want to be forced to log into a third-party platform to view an open public meeting. So what I want to propose is one of two things, an and/or an or. One, either A, move it to a YouTube Live, which does not require login and that is publicly accessible just by a link. Two, you could do that in addition to the Facebook Live so that those like me that don't have Facebook can still access the public meetings. Or you can embed the Facebook Livestream into the Eatonville website so that anyone can just go to the Eatonville website, land on a Eatonville website page for this specific purpose, and then they don't have to log into Facebook. Now, much like everything else, you are forced to log in if you want to comment on those, but, you know, I would just need to usually view, maybe some others who also don't have Facebook. So that's my first suggestion for tonight. The other one was, I guess similarly related to the, the pool and that whole just general complex area, and while, you know, I think that we definitely do need that because youth sports, youth activities, and really just activities for everyone in general are desperately needed. So I've brought a few times in the past to you guys, and I'm just wondering, what does it take to A, get something on your voting agenda, or B, get more allocated time to discuss it? Because I've discussed pickleball on those courts that are in ruin right next to that pool, which I guess is also in complete ruin. So I'm just wondering, had there been any discussions from you guys on that one? What would it take to push such an agenda forward? And look at that entire plot of land that Eatonville owns right around the, um, the daycare, the kids' center? I don't know what that building used to be. And then adding to that and turning it, not necessarily into just an aquatic park, but more of maybe a small sports park. Add in a full basketball court, because there's only a half-court there now today, which isn't enough. You can add things and then have that drive for people to be active, not only for themselves, but also within the community. So that's all I have. Thank you, everyone.
And the next one would be Charles Bargnier.
Good evening to all, mayor and council. Just want to take a moment to thank you all for the recent workshop that we attended, being the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee. On behalf of that committee, we had a very good workshop, and I also thank Ms. King for sitting that up for us. It was very interesting, very informative, and some of the things that we received from that, uh, from that class was very, very good. And just wanted to take this moment to thank the mayor and council for allowing us to go. And I think each board that you have, we need to make sure that they participate in different various workshops. That would strengthen the town's boards. And also, too, in that workshop, we, um, came up with some, some very good suggestions. And also, they did talk about updating your ordinances, and also, they talked about impact fees. And I know that we've been, the council have been discussing the fact that impact fees is very important. In that meeting, they really brought out how important it was to have impact fees for most municipalities that do have impact fees, and that's one of the ways of vehicle by which you draw and drive revenues. So again, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Board.
We have Angela Johnson.
Well, good evening, mayor, council, fellow residents. A question that, when, I know you may not discuss it because it wasn't moved down to council decision, it's on the consent agenda. The fees that are going to be charged for the usage of the Dent and Johnson Center, I didn't see anything, and I, and I'll, I'll give you the scenario. We have various different neighborhoods where members of the communities are coming together and creating community groups, not neighborhood associations, and probably would be, would face a barrier if there was cost associated to have their meetings at the Dent Johnson Center or any facilities for the town. So I wasn't sure if there was any consideration that could be included in the contractual, um, the form application for those types of groups that are grassroots coming up out of the community. So, um, I didn't see anything, and I could have overlooked it, but if you guys can kind of think about that, because if you have a group of citizens coming together to do something for the improvement of a neighborhood, and you're asking for a million-dollar insurance liability to show all of that, most likely, we won't have that. So just speaking on behalf of the Catalina Park Community Group, specifically asking you all to have some consideration, and I'm, and then I wasn't sure if that was something that was going to be rolled out to usage of the parks, the pavilions, and so on and so forth, so, or if it was specifically just for the Dent and Johnson Community Center. And, um, and I would like to echo, um, my fellow board members' sentiments. The Planning and Zoning Workshop that we went to was very informative, and I too think that it would be a, be a great opportunity for us to move forward with some of the things that Ms. King had, Mrs. King has recommended, as well as you all thinking about doing those types of trainings for all of your other boards. Thank you.
Just, just a quick question for you now. When you said, did you see the community-based organizations to our facility waived?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So that would be.
That would, okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, this is the last one, we have Joyce Arby.
Of course.
I'm gonna start being positive. I would like to thank, first of all, Councilwoman Randolph for speaking with me. Thank you, I appreciate you, Dr. Thury, you guys. Thank you for our conversation. I appreciate you. Mayor, thank you for letting me feel like I was being heard, and what you said at the end of the last council meeting, it was like I could have been speaking through you. It touched me, it was like my heart speaking, and I thank you for that. My buddy, Councilman Daniels, this man is so misunderstood. Thank you for speaking with me. I see and understand what you're trying to do. You've got a lot of cleanup, because there were things that happened before any of you got here that were a lot of trouble. I appreciate you. You are misunderstood, we gotta work on your delivery, okay? But I appreciate you. Vice Mayor and Councilman Washington, I hope I get a chance to speak to you, but I want to thank you guys, because I feel like you're working for all of us, from your hearts. Um, I want to echo one thing that this gentleman said earlier about Eatonville and a brand. Eatonville can have a great brand, and one thing that I'll probably send you an email about is what used to be Club Eaton, where my mother worked as a waitress before I was born, and when my aunt was doing James Brown's hair, that is a place that has so much historic value, possibly. I know somebody else plotted, but it's something to think about for the future. A club where people like Arita Franklin knew she could perform when she could perform in other places. Okay, that's important. And there's one other thing. I am so disturbed and confused a little bit, sir, with part of your presentation, because I felt like you were coming for the mayor. It bothers me. It always bothers me when I feel like, as a woman, of course, that women are being unjustly attacked, and I feel like for you to come in here and say to her, are you here to help? Are you, are you here to stop something because she doesn't agree with what you're saying? I feel like it's not appropriate, isn't the place, this is her place, right here. And I just feel like the way you came at her was kind of like Real Housewives or something, like what's happening? It really bothers me, respectfully. Your ideas might be great, but I just felt like that was, you know, inappropriate, that's all. And I appreciate you all. That's it. That was the last one.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for, um, item number one, the minutes for amended, you should have amended, I mean, minutes, and the item number three, the amended contract for Dent and Johnson to include price increases.
Slumber.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye. Wait, I'm sorry, question?
Okay, on the community-based, um, meetings, make sure, um, they know that a rental would come before your date. If somebody want to rent that facility, they can't have the same date or the same time, if, if you understand what I'm saying, that the rentals come before the free community-based group, unless they.
Oh, the paying rentals.
Right. So that's what we need to have in the contract, make sure that they understand that part there.
And I want to say, that is.
That's it.
In here somewhere, but I'll, I'll make certain. Alright, so it's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? Alright, this is the agenda that has been approved. Next item is the approval of the Integrity Group General Contract for Services.
Another tension, should be thrown before.
Oh, oh, um, the extension of utilization of vacation accumulations for employees. So, a motion on the floor to approve the extension of utilization of vacation accumulations for employees.
Sure. Second with discussion.
It's been moved, second, Councilman Daniels.
Um, the former PAO petitioned us, and I believe it was December, early January, to extend, and I know quite a few conversations I had when he was here, was importance of not allowing this to continue. Every year, we seem to keep doing this, and it was extended until March, correct?
March.
So, right now, can you all tell how many people in the police department are kind of over right now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have four officers, um, and you know, we asked for a payout for the, for the officers. Mr. Singh put that on hold, and, and when he put that on hold and then he left, that left us in limbo. So we just asked him 30 days to extend that time, and that 30 days, those are the time that we have on the books, those officers would be in compliance throughout the rest of the year.
Is that feasible?
That is feasible.
So, we know at the end of every fiscal year that they took me down. What's different from then to now?
Because we have, the street, uh, have the officers put in their time and not wait to the end of the year. So what I had them do was give me their time to get them below the 240 by the end of April, and then by the, December 31st, we'll make sure that they get their time in. So we shouldn't have this problem ever again.
So do you have a complete breakdown?
No, I just, uh, how many officers? Four officers, yes.
Okay, that's four officers. How many hours are they over?
Uh, we're asking each other to take 80 hours.
That's 320 hours in 30 days.
Yeah.
And we're saying we're gonna be able to handle that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'll tell you, Deputy Chief, my issue, and I believe we got to take care of employees and all that, but if I recall in the budget plan, I stated that we needed an additional two officers that had been brought on during that time frame, and during that time, you told me no. So if those two officers would have been brought in in the month of October, we would have been able to let them out.
Now, you still have the issue, but what you were saying, you were saying give the officers and take away all, all the overtime was not, was not gonna work. That's what you put on the floor.
No. I said that you were two officers short, and Ms. Gibson is behind you right now.
Correct.
And contested that, I said you needed two officers when I went through.
And you did, but you also said you wanted to take away all the overtime for the two officers.
Right, and, and the reason I said that, because we had, and I didn't have it in front of me, I remember the number, it was $30,000 in overtime that was planned.
Correct.
And then I said, we actually planned for $30,000 in overtime instead of having enough officers?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We were shorting your officers, but with the plan that we have in place now, if we're giving the extension to the 31st of next month, we'll get those officers down, and then with them putting vacation throughout December 31st, we will be, they will be below the 240 mark.
And, and I'll ask you again, what changed from October now? We didn't hire, how many deputies did we hire, and how many did we lose from October to now?
We haven't lost any. So what I'm saying is, we're just restructuring and giving the people time off. Yes, the overtime's gonna increase a little bit, but we're gonna be able to get those people off.
So how much do you calculate that is gonna be increased to?
I couldn't give you that number, I can give it to you tomorrow.
Do we know how much overtime we've used so far this year?
No, I can give it to you. I haven't looked at it.
Does Ms. Gibson know? Beth?
I don't know, I don't wanna call them yet, but I can give it to you.
So, is it enough still in the budget?
Yes.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Or not?
I mean, because I can't hear.
We'll, we'll, oh, okay.
Yeah, if we're gonna talk, yeah.
We'll, we'll look at the numbers and bring it back.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman, council, are you done?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, um, in these 240 hours, uh, it's exceedingly 240 hours of rest hold. Now, the issue that I see was one, and that is, it appears that if we get into the point that employees are not taking their vacation, that's something that we have to do as far as managing the employees. We cannot continue to let them keep working and working and working. And I know how, how, I know how it is sometimes when you squeeze and you may not have enough help.
Right.
But at some point, even if they can take, if they wanted to, incremental days, and that way, we don't have to get ourselves, you know, backed up against walls.
And that's why I came up with just a plan to either lengthen their days off to take off some time, plus put in vacation time. Instead of taking three days off, they would take four. So the plan we have in place, we are able to do what we need to do if we'll give it the extra 30 days. And then we'll break it down, and then by the end of the year, no one will be over the 240 mark.
Yes, but also, even though they have exceeded the 240.
Yes, ma'am.
They still accumulating leave as they're working.
Correct.
So they never gonna really get it under control unless they take weeks at a time.
And this is why we are, are asking for the 30 days, and then we have another plan in place after April 31st to make sure that they get down by Jan, uh, December 31st.
Okay, now how many officers we have total?
Twelve.
Twelve officers?
Yes.
And then you were, what, 12-hour shifts?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many on duty on an average day?
Four.
And you can spare one officer to rotate?
Oh, that's what I'm saying, that's what we're doing.
Sorry, I did, I did have a question, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you said 30 days will fix it.
Yeah.
Would 60 days make it better? Would 90 days make it easier? So, because now you're gonna put a strain to fix the strain.
Yeah, 60 days would make it a lot better, but I just asked for 30, but 60 would make it a lot better. But all we're trying to do is get the officers down, and then we're gonna use the rest of the year to make sure that they don't accumulate over the 240 by, uh, December 31st.
Right, because what I don't, what I don't want is we get 30 days out, and, you know, a plan is only as good as the plan.
I got you.
You know, so if, if, so we can avoid your having to come back if we just be realistic.
Right.
And realistically, if the plan works, 30 days works.
Yes.
But things happen.
Mm-hmm.
And if, you know, because I came thinking that if we're going to stop this process of the accumulation of 200, of being over 240, to just make sure it's taken care of this budget year.
Correct.
So September 30th, by September 30th, you either use it or lose it.
Right. Well, the, the, the budget year for the vacation time is December 31st.
December 31st.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, so instead of, I'm sorry, so instead of 30, 30 days, I honestly think we should probably stretch it out more than that.
Yes, sir.
What's your plan if it doesn't pass, you'll get the extension, what's your plan with the?
We'll come back again and ask you again.
I'm on it.
And finances on there, too. So all we do is asking for you guys to give us the consideration, 30 to 60 days, as the mayor says. We have a plan in place where we're gonna take, um, block time plus add days to their days off throughout the year so we can get them down.
And you're not gonna train the officers?
No.
Where, lose if you're gonna lose the one, save if you lose the one?
No, we're not gonna lose anyone. As a matter of fact, I have three reserve officers in, in the Pike, and those officers, with their time that they donate to the town, will be able to, um, to give vacation time without impacting the budget.
I'm with Councilman Daniels, uh, so that's gonna create overtime?
It's gonna create some overtime, yes.
How much, do you all need to know?
I, like I said, I can give you the numbers, and, you know, if you want the numbers, I can give them to you, it's not a problem.
I, I, before I make this, this is, I would like to know the numbers.
Not a problem.
Okay, uh, well, I would, I would like to know the numbers.
Right, but, and, we have it in our budget to, to make the plan work, but if you want the numbers, we can give them to you.
Okay, I, for my, I don't know who this board wants to, I wanna see those numbers, I wanna see what type of overtime it's obviously getting, you know, that, you know.
Okay.
This plan you got, just for mine.
Not a problem.
Ma'am?
Yes, Councilman?
So, Deputy Chief, if, if we were to table this, that's being what it called, under strain?
Not really.
If we're gonna give them the 60 days, no?
Well, I just think when you come in and ask for, um, financial adjustments, you should be able to provide numbers to be able to facilitate why you're trying to do something. That's my opinion.
Well, like I said, um, we had a plan for you guys, which, uh, some of the council asked for the payout, and that got put on hold, and then Mr. Singh left, so my alternative was to come up with a plan on how to do it effectively, 30 days out, and then use it by the end of the year.
When, when, if, if we were to table this, could just scenario it out and give us all the options so we can actually have a clear path?
Sure.
Of what's best?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
When you talking with this, you saying, what did he say? What was his plan?
He didn't give, he just said he wanted to, to look at the finances of the, the police department and of the town before he did the payout. But unfortunately, he left before he can give me that answer.
Right now, the way that I look at this, you still have about 38 days before the end of, uh, March 31st, and you can work that out with four officers.
Yeah, we have officers, we have.
That's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, we have officers on, with time on book now, we have officers on vacation now, that's using, we're, that's, that's affecting four officers. This is, we're just, this, this affecting four officers, and we have those officers on vacation or either about to take time.
I would prefer we work this out and just stick to the plan, because when, when we start deviating from what we say what we're gonna do, and then we do just the opposite, it's just gonna be a continuation of coming to the board with the same issue. So we might as well just do it and just do it the right way.
So you're saying, keep it at the March thirtieth, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And that's the motion that's on the floor now?
April thirtieth.
Well, we put, I mean, it's.
March thirtieth is the, what's on there now, we're asking for April thirtieth.
April, April thirtieth.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, if you think you're gonna work it out in thirty days, I'm for it. So I mean, we might as well just take the vote, and if, and if, and if it's, if it doesn't pass, you said you'll bring it back.
Yeah.
Same as if you're gonna table it, we might as well vote for it. Or in a second, so it's gonna move to a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Councilwoman Miranda, what was your?
Say it again, please.
What?
Is it a extension here?
This is for the, the.
March thirty.
Well, right now it's March thirty first, but it's to April thirtieth, that's what it says here.
This, this is taking.
That's, that's the, um, it's moving, moving the threshold from March thirty first to April thir-, that's what we lose, from your document.
I wanna do March thirty first, I think we should end it March thirty first, as we had already.
Oh, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, okay.
So that's three, two, two names. Is that right?
I'm keeping it at March thirty first.
No, so she's really a nay.
Three nays.
She's a nay.
So the motion failed.
Yeah, okay.
So what, what, what it was?
It's, it's a nay, Chief, we'll, we'll bring it back. So it stays as it is, March thirtieth. First, thirty first, thirty first. Our next on my agenda is the approval of the Integrity Group, General Contractor Services. Um, just like the ordinance for the rental, this is not new either. Uh, the Integrity Group came before us and their whole job would be seeking funding through grants. Not just seeking funding by one person saying, hey, there's grants over here, but taking care of that whole gamut. Because right now, even with the three, the three grants that are out there that we have, we need personnel that can maneuver all of that and balance it. So with the Integrity Group, they kinda take all of that up. So to open it up, I'll go ahead and put the motion on the floor, at least get to a second floor discussion. So the motion is to approve the Integrity Group General Contractor Services.
Just a little second discussion.
It's the move, the second. Uh, Councilman Daniels.
Um, Attorney, have you had a chance to review the document?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But has Attorney?
Um, I, I asked Mr. Shepherd, and he said that he hadn't even asked her to review it.
Um, my next thing is, um, Integrity Group, have they done more for the, the town before?
I can't, um, when you said what's in the town, they were, they were part of the, getting insurance? The insurance claim, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
How much money did we receive from that?
But the Integrity Group, it wasn't, the Integrity Group, you were speaking to a, about a person. That would have been Mr. Glover, that was working with that.
Is this Joe Glover?
Yes, he, but he's not with him. The Integrity Group is the state term contractor holder. They have subcontractors, so he would be more like the liaison between the municipalities and the Integrity Group.
So, I, I was just papering the record and then I, um, sent my time to someone else. The last time this came forward, I asked the Attorney to do not only references, but then offer any documentation I get to receive back. I asked them in reference to the grants that were already there, they were counting money of the grants that was already there, and I think Mr. Johnson was off there when I had that conversation, and they were still trying to count grants that was already, um, captured by the town. So I don't understand how they can piggyback off of that, so, um, I have some vague questions on it.
Uh, so I have to give clarification, the Integrity Group is not even including any grants that the town currently has in, in process. Now, what they will do if the town requests is they can pick up the administration of the grants already in process, but they, that has nothing to do with this at all.
So, since you are quite aware of that, um, how much in fees or in cost would you estimate that they would be given from the town of Eatonville if we would pass this, um, tonight?
Okay, a couple of things, if you go to the state term, if you use Google, state term contracts, you'll come up to a website that's by the state. And on that website, you'll see the Integrity Group is number one, want, have, they have a state term contract, which is that S T C numbers. On that webpage, you'll see their pricing, their pricing on the website, it matches precisely what's on page twenty-six of your document. These hourly rates are, there, there were two other contractors on that, um, that were minority contractors. Emergen, and I, and I'm trying to just give you all the information, might be another question, Emergen and B C A. Emergen's hourly rates were considerably lower. B C A's was slightly lower. But what Integrity Group does have, if you go on the website, you see all of their principals and everyone that is, that would be handling the, the services. In regards to pricing, if you go to page twenty-six, that's page four, that's item four, and if you go down to C, it talks about task orders. Task orders are the individual grant requests that we give. So if we say we want the Integrity Group to locate grants for a pool in the town, then they can say, we found three grants, and one they will give a ten percent administrative fee, one fifteen, whatever. That is where we negotiate. Um, what you might think is that we, the town has to pay funds upfront. Everything is gonna be paid according to the task order and the agreement of the administrative fee costs. That's where they'll get their cost from. But in my conversations with the representative, it is very important to me that even though you have the Integrity Group handling the grants, you still need someone in town just overseeing that whole process. And that's where the negotiation of the administrative fee costs would, would come into play, because we don't wanna have to pick up that tab. We'd want that included.
And so that's in the, up to two, two million dollars, correct?
No, that's item D.
Right.
If you, in item D, that clause must be in all contracts. And it says at the very end of that con, uh, at the end of that paragraph, this not to exceed amount, that two million dollars is required to be included in all contracts from which FEMA and HUD projects may be tasked in the future. So they have to put that clause in there.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman?
Um, this group, uh, manages, uh, federal emergency for, uh, FEMA, like storms, disasters, hurricane, that type of thing.
That's, that's how they came to us initially, that's how Mr. Glover came to us.
When I read these documents that were sent, all these documents basically referred to national disasters and the future impact of the town. So I was faced in not understanding about what they do is basically doing management services for the town of Eatonville in case that we were in a position that we need these types of services. But I don't really see too much, maybe a little variation, for what FEMA has to offer when we have storms and we have an impact, uh, to our town. Now, the way that I see it right now is that, um, we can basically here locally do the same type of services that they have to offer. Because if we get ourselves into a bind like we are now, when we hired, um, Mr. Seem to be the C A O, he was basically trying to handle and balance at least two or three positions, and that was a grant writer, a C A O, and also being administrator, um, during the day, and also to help with the finance. I just think that we're just selling ourselves short by leaving up to one agency, assuming they're gonna do everything for us when we have feeling it doesn't cost us anything, they give us money, we give us grant, we've done this before. There's no cost really that much to the town dealing with emergency management issues where we're able to get funding from the government. The last hurricane, the government was giving away thousands, millions and millions of dollars. And we get ourselves into a situation that we're not able to handle, uh, certain, uh, issues that we may come across. We always have the county in our back door, we always have another entity that can probably help us out. So in the last five years, I have only personally, only witnessed by my observation and talking to the residents. Merely some of the houses get damaged, the roofs, tree remover, those kind of things here. Uh, other than the last hurricane, we just had, uh, just some bloody issues in, in our community. So I think a small community like Eatonville, I don't really see a need for the service at this time. And it's more widely needed in much larger communities and cities. So I would like to, um, say that, uh, if we hired a grant writer, a H R person, and maybe another staff person, I think we'd be able to do the same and maybe even cheaper than what they have to offer. So that's my statement on that.
So, so that I'm clear. Um, and I, I invite you to go to the website to see, we're, we're speaking at a team, not, not a single grant writer that, um, write. If, if you wanna stay in the ten thousand dollar grant, twenty thousand dollar grant, then by all means, get an individual grant writer. But when you look at busted pipes, um, five point nine million today, that's wonderful. But when you look at the, the condition of the town and all the other grants that are out there for this town, we're, 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 in, in my mind, I'm thinking twenty million, thirty million. That's not a single grant writer, that's a team. And then once, even with the five point nine million, there's so many pieces to that, that it takes a team. And you can't, this town can't handle it. You know, the, the grant coordinator, financial coordinator person that I wanted on the budget was just as a contact person to make certain that we stay in direct connection with someone like an Integrity Group. So, if, if, I, 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 I'm, I'm kinda floored. The, and, and, and I wanted to address, if you go to page twenty-five, item E, it says identification and pursuit of other grant and funding opportunities, including hazard mitigation grant programs. Um, so that kind of says that whatever task orders we give them, that's what they will pursue, and their pricing is right here in this contract. And then F is other duties as tasked by the town, and if you look at that, even in just soil test, if, if you, with the current five point nine million dollar grant now, we have to do an environmental assessment. I mean, so the Integrity Group or someone like them can do so much more. And then I just simply have to ask you, if, right now, we're strained. We just had a conversation about vacation hours because persons aren't taking their vacation. So if you want funding that's out there, and we can get that funding from a corporation that does this all day long, much more easily than, than a town like ours can start to learn the process. If, if you don't want them to do it, then if your, your option can't be find a grant writer, that, that just can't be the, the option. You've gotta have a better option. Yes, Councilman Daniels?
Um, you said a few words a second ago, ma'am, you said option. Where did this option come from? Have there been other options out there?
You, where did the Integrity Group come from? When I became mayor, Mr. Glover reached out to me, he had reached out to the prior administration, but they kind of turned him away. I don't know, I can't confirm that. But we had a conversation, I went based on my conversation with him and my billboard, he presented to the council. And then after that, we turned him down maybe two, three times, or I, I tabled it a couple of times. And then he reached out to the C A O, the former C A O, and they had a conversation. I didn't even know about that conversation, however, the former C A O felt like I felt. This, uh, this company, Integrity Group, and if you go on the website, it not only has their group, but it also has, um, like a reference list of the work that they've done, who they've done it for, what type of work that they've done. Um, I, I don't, I don't know, and, and subset, also there with our, our auditors. So we're going to the right places, we're doing the right things, we're getting the right corporation, but to answer your question, he reached out to the new administration.
So would it be fair to say, should, should we post it out there? You, you know the scope of work that you're looking for, that you think that we need, um, towards the town's development? Why don't we post it out there and see who else comes and like?
Can we put an R F Q out there for?
The services that you're saying that the town is in need of, because out of all of this stuff, was this on our radar? Or are we only going by this because they put out there what they want us to see? Do we, do we actually know, have we actually done a SWOT analysis to figure out what is needed to perpetuate or to take the town to the next level when it come down to grants and all stuff that we, do we actually know that?
Well, let me, to answer your question, I'm, I'm giving you another piece of information, it's something that someone asked earlier about impact fees. Um, I was in a conversation with a, a company that did the impact fees for, uh, another municipality, and one of the things that they'll be getting, because they, I mean, they, there was a lot of questions they asked. And one thing that is coming is impact fees can only cover certain things. And some of those, in, in, in regards to what does new development impact? So when you think of everything that new development or development impacts, then those are things that you will get an impact fee for. So that list is going to come to me, so to answer your question, based on not just that list, but there's a rural management plan that, that it had a list of what, eighteen million dollars, twenty million dollars worth of needs in the town, and it also prioritized some of those needs. So do we have the data and the information of what is needed in this town? Yes, and that USDA rural management plan was from two thousand and eighteen. And none of that, and all of those needs are still here. So to answer your question, definitely, and that's the first place that I would go to. And for the most part, it's nothing I need to tell you, the pipes alone is, is a, is a big enough project. So to answer your question, yes, we know.
So would the, would the Integrity Group be doing lobbying for us also?
I, I'm glad you ask these questions. So in regards to lobbying, if we get a lobbyist for the town, we have to pay that lobbyist. And then we tell that lobbyist, hey, I want you to work on getting these three things, or two. And you have to pay the lobbyists, the lobbyists could be successful or not be successful. And the lobbyist is probably gonna approach those persons that they know. When you look at the Integrity Group, and this is something that, that I've learned, is we look at the Integrity Group, some of these persons are retired. So those same people that lobbyists know, who, a lot of lobbyists are retired or no longer in that line, that line of work, these same people know those same people. So, is it direct lobbying? No. No. But is it saying, hey, that town really needs this, it's a, it's a good grant, you know our company, we, we're going to make sure the auditing and all that is done. Property and the monies are spent according to plan? You have built-in lobbyists.
Well, and, and my point, that's what I'm trying to go with. That's why it's important for us to get outside of the streets of Eatonville. That's the purpose of having a state rep, a senator and all those. Those people are the vehicles that's used for us to be able to get money, that we don't have to pay out all this. So those are the conversations that we, we have in. But until we get all our data and get all our stuff together, I think that we're just going to be spending our wheels, wasting money just throwing it out there. I mean, I just feel like that we should take time, as R F Q, as R F Q it out there. Let's get all of our structures and strategies and all of our data together in order to do that. I don't, I, what would the impact be to our financial status of bringing integrity group on?
So I go back, and I, and I, I don't want to just say it. If you go to.
I understand.
Page 26.
Yeah, it costs 180, 180, $180 for a project, 160 dollars for a scene.
However, it's going to be based on their specific task order. And that task order is going to, what, what are we tasking them to do? If we're tasking them to look for money for a pool, look for money for a museum. Then they go out and they look for grant money for pools, museums, complexes. And then they look at, and that grant, it will tell you if an administrative fee will be allowed. And if an administrative fee will be allowed, it'll tell you how much.
Right, so if they say it's $10,000, how many dollars do you have?
Not 10, say 10%.
No, I'm saying, it could say 10%, but it could say a dollar amount. Because a lot of them are programmed, basically want to put more into the program than to, than to paying your salaries and wages of your salary.
So depending on the task order, the fee is going to fluctuate depending on the task order. And that's the understanding that I made sure I made. Because whatever that fee is, the town, I want to make sure that the, our contact, that position is covered. And that it doesn't come from the town's budget. So to answer your question in regards to any fees from the town, then I'm going to expect any fees from the town to be covered through the administration of the process. And the negotiation, the negotiation of the task order. If it can't be negotiated, then that's not something that this group will pick up. Are there any other questions? And also to answer your question, you said put it out there for venue and all of that. When you go on the state contract list, the state, the state term contract list, it has like a list of them. And the pri, first of all, a whole lot of companies that have a state contract. So that negotiation that you're discussing is, is kind of on there already by the four, five or six companies that do this. Number one. Number two, based on what I just stated and what I had negotiated, I'm in conversation, I didn't negotiate, let me, let me make that clear. That I had in conversation is we determine or come to agreement about our, our, what we receive in each task order. So, and I say that because even if they have their hourly rates here, we still have the opportunity to determine what it is that we will, that we want. Based on each project, each grant that we're asking them to get. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
No. Well, I do ask this council, this is like the third time you've said no. Come with, come with a solution. Come with a solution. We can put out an R F Q, but we're going to come back to who's strong in getting it done. Just come back to deliver solution. Interim report, Mr. Pressley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share and to the town of Eatonville. In my first initial statement, I just would like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. That's what we're here for. We come by way of the Musa County area, from Jacksonville. We're here after several years of working in municipal government. Several things I would like to bring to the attention of the council tonight. Our goal has been to do an analysis with the actual department heads and staff. On what's, what's the state of the town? And the goal is to figure out a direction before to get staff headed in the right direction. That being stated, we'll be working to eventually in the next few weeks, meeting with each one of our council. To discuss their, their heart for the town and where their direction is. And hopefully come up with a plan to hopefully mitigate some of the additional time spent on things in these meetings to make sure they're productive and headed in the right direction. Also, we have spoken with several, of, of course, the attorney as well as with our planning. And we do have some ideas in regards to dealing with some of the issues that have been brought tonight. We do ask for your time and attention to assist us in making sure we can present you qualitative reports for the town in future endeavors. I believe that's all, unless there's any questions for me tonight. We'll look forward to bringing some more information as tomorrow will be one week from me. So we look forward to more time with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney.
Uh, no report.
Counselwoman.
Yes. Thank you very much. I have quite a few things that I want to make just very short on my council's report. First of all, I'd like to ask, where are we with the water issues? Have there been any deadlines that have to be met? I think there was one earlier one.
I can speak to that actually, for, for that. We had actual meetings today with D P, Mr. Davis, as well as with Mr. English and Biometrics. We met and discussed the current status, which is a consent order has been issued to the town. That consent order needs to be signed by the town to proceed forward, to meet the measures, to bring us back into full compliance. We're currently working on a management contract with Biometrics. And to come up with the actual status, to present quality water reports on a daily basis. And to make sure all the actions that are needed are taking place daily for that, along with our public works department. Based off the conversation with D P today, they, they've seen our plan. We're also planning to put out in our water bills, a, a notice for the community on the status of what's taking place. And to give them a what's what when it comes to that. Let me say this, and to be clear, our water issue is no issue. However, there are compliance measures that haven't been taken in the last years that caused the D P to proceed forward with a consent order being issued. Which had some fines associated to it. Those fines that are associated can be mitigated through improvements done by the town. And we'll be working along with staff to find those efficient items that we can do within the town to mitigate the fines. While still meeting the items of that consent order. The only other item on that consent order is to have an engineer doing an actual evaluation of our water program for the town. And we're working to work on a contractual agreement with that to present back to council to proceed forward with that. So today, there's been one test, two, actually two tests done, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. English. Two tests done, one, we received a report on, which we're in good status. And we're now waiting on the additional report over the next couple of weeks to present back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the other reports I have, and I want to address very briefly a problem in the last three weeks. We had two residents here in the town of Eatonville that experienced some problems with backup. And one particular resident had made a phone call to two plumbers. That came out, two different companies, to assess the backup. So all in a sense, what actually happened, and that is, a lot of these issues that a lot of the residents are having. I know that particular one person and the other person who was here going Lincoln Street. It was, the same or similar, but maybe a little different. But however, my concern is this, that these issues have to be taken care of. And they have to be examined and reviewed and making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do on the town side. Now I know sometimes there's some issues on the resident side that they have to do. Where both systems, at some point, something crashed and the, you know, the sewer doesn't get through the lines. But anyway, I understand that the town is now taking care of that issue, which I'm very glad that, you know, we're looking into that. But however, I really think of some of these issues, some of our employees, I think that we have, need to be better trained. I was very disappointed when I was told that we didn't even have a snake. That thing that they call the snake that goes up into the line and you pull all the bush out. So I would like to see the town, if you do not have already since three weeks ago, to invest in one of those. Because that is a very important piece of equipment in order to get those jobs done. Okay, the other issue is that, basically customer service and attitude. We have people who work in for our employees, excuse me, working for the town of Eatonville. And they're here to serve and service our residents. We need to make sure, and they need to be taught. The proper way to address people when you're coming to their house, they're trying to explain something. This is an elderly lady, very well-known in our community. And she called me about this incident, I was very disturbed about it. And then this person just kind of blew off the handle and told her that I don't want to look at that paper from Frank Gay. Because she had called Frank Gay to look into the problem. And then saying, he's, I'm going to retire, I'm going to retire anyway, and all of that. That is so unprofessional and so inappropriate to say that to someone. When you see people who live alone and they need help. I'm not interfering with anything going on. People call me all the time for different issues. The first thing I always ask, did you call Town Hall? Because I do not want to be stated that I interfere with something. I get involved when people call me and I come to their rescue, or I come to their comfort or whatever. And try to do whatever I can and try to contact the right officials to look into the problem. So we need to get better and make sure that our people know exactly how to respond. And how to react in a very respectful manner when we're dealing with residents. So if you got a problem, if they don't want to do the job, just find another job someplace else. That's the way I see it. Okay, the other issue is, that I have here is, Mayor, at the meeting in December. I did write, I don't have my tablet with me, but I did write the person's name. Lady who spoke about nine apartments at the meeting, and she kept mentioning the mayor. Giving something to the mayor, she's expecting something and no one got back to her. When is that amount?
I remember the, the lady that stood up, but I have not spoken to anyone about any, anything. I don't, I, I've never met her. You know, so unless it's something in writing, maybe she gave it to the town. But I, I don't even, I, I, when she was speaking, I didn't know about any nine, nine.
Nine apartments, and she did reference something over here on this side of town, over here, on the west side, on the east side. Over there in the area, somewhere over that way. But I just wanted to know whether or not there was anything that we missed or something that was supposed to be brought to the council. I wasn't very clear about that. Okay, also, I want everyone to know that those electrical boxes that they have for central link. There were 13 of those that were cited by the public works department. And I had been following up and working with Mr. English and trying to get those boxes. Because a lot of those, a lot of our residents are complaining about those boxes. Some of them has just been gushed out with the wires, all exposed. Those are cables, some of those are actually live cable boxes that are still, we still have people that have landlines. So they, there's about 12 of them more on the list that has to be repaired. The last ones were repaired, it took the gentleman something like 6 to 7 hours down here on, by the chamber, just to repair those boxes. So if you see any more of those, you can let Mr. English know about that, so we can keep following up on that. Okay, also, I'd like to find out, since Mr. Washington is no longer, I don't know if he's still doing code enforcement, maybe just doing it posturally? And the recreation? But if he's on, if he's doing recreation and duties, why is he still riding around in the code enforcement truck? So I was asked that question, and I said that I will find out. But I, I don't know. Can you answer that, Mayor?
Until we have a full-time code enforcement person, then he's, he's doing part and part.
So he's doing half and half?
Yes. Just, just to make certain that we keep both of them going.
Okay, all right, that's, 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 that's the answer on that. Also, the 5.9 million dollar grant, I concur, I don't really think that would be enough money for us to do what we have to do. So are we looking towards other grants or resources that can help us out with that? The 5.9 million dollar grant, would that be enough to, a sufficient amount of funds that is needed to do what it's supposed to do?
Counselwoman, ran if I just had a whole discussion about the.
No, I'm just, I ask a question, is it yes or no? It's a yes or no answer.
Y'all just voted it down, so that was a huge yes.
I understand that, but I'm saying, do you have enough sufficient funds for this 5.9 million dollar grant? I'm not talking about the blue.
You're talking about the reimbursable portion of the 5.9? When that grant was established, it was established under the C R A. Part of the idea there is that because it was reimbursed when I stated this, just before prior meetings. Is that the funds from the C R A, because that's where it was established, would be used for the reimbursable, to help with that reimbursement.
All right, a couple more things. Kelly in the Park had a wonderful workshop neighborhood services about two weeks ago. And I want to commend Ms. Johnson for on board with that and meeting with the group. And they've been doing a cleanup and it looks really nice down there in Kelly in the Park. Also, I'll be coming back to make a report and maybe presenting something to the council. On the status, on the logo that we have for Eatonville. I did speak to the artist, and his name is Ron Kelly, and he came with that design there. It's probably at over 20, right here on the podium, if y'all can see that right there. He's finding, and it's also here, he's finding the documents that was given to the town where he made an arrangement to present this logo. And he bought it, he gave the town a donation or even paid a certain price for it, which he did, share that with me. But he's trying to find the other documents as far as what we, what I need as far as making sure that we are protected. But so far, we haven't been able to find anything in our files. We have people that's using this logo inappropriately. Because once you use a logo, that's automatically saying that you have an endorsement from that particular company. And you have permission to use that logo for the purpose that you're using it for. And I don't think that's the case. I don't think anybody is getting permission to use a logo. They're just more or less duplicating it from some other source. But that's not allowed. So soon as I can get that information, I will be bringing it back to the council. Because we need to legally do this and do this in the right manner. Okay, also, I will be working on, and I will be bringing this to the council. Everything that I do, everybody, I want you to know, it goes before the council. Okay, Juneteenth, last year we had a wonderful Juneteenth. It just happened so to be on Father's Day, we didn't have a really big turnout. But at least it was a very good celebration. Bishop King at the Life Center Church, I sent him a message today, late this afternoon. Let him know that he did open up an invitation last year that he would like to host that at his church. So I'll be working that and bringing that before the council. Also, I think again, that we should be working for next year for a M A K, Martin Luther King Steering Committee. To help with the. for a MAK Martin DePean Steering Committee to help with the planning of the town's activities. And this will relieve a lot of extra work off of staff members. So I think that's important. Also, I do have some information about the zip code. I've had several people ask me this here at the Zora Presser. And I do have some documentation from the United States Postal Service. They are requiring that, what needs to happen is that they will be doing a boundary review to assess the needs of a zip code in our area. And of course, that's by the number of deliveries that we have here. Since we have two sides of town, three two eight one zero, we have three two seven by one on this side. So they'll be doing a boundary review to determine whether or not is it adequate for us to have a zip code or such a zip code for the town of Eatonville. But when they do this, they will make a decision that it will be a unique zip code for Eatonville. And I've been asked about this several times, even during the Zora Presser, several people were asking about that. So I just want to just give you all an update. So soon as we get this, it will require some feedback from the town or maybe other officials, maybe our state representatives, for those to get behind us and rally behind the town of Eatonville. And I think this is going to bring, Mayor, I think this is going to bring us some teamwork and maybe just more closeness. And we need to do things to work together. If you have an idea, one of the council members have an idea, let's rally behind that council member and let's support what they're doing. There's just too much division and separation that we have here in the town. And we need to be more close. If we say who we are and all of this historical things that we've been presenting, and we're going to do all of this and we're going to play on the playing field with that, let's just do this all the time, not just sometimes. So I want to thank you all very much for coming tonight. And I want to thank the council very much and I thank the mayor and the council. And thank you, our new C A O. Thank you very much. Thank you. Attorney, thank you.
Councilwoman.
One more word, Mr. Mayor. Last night here, right?
Presley.
Presley. One thing you did, I want to echo on with Ms., Ms. Councilwoman Randolph said about equipment. We need to follow up on public works. And it's kind of sad that we purchased a snake years ago with a camera on it, but that got lost, just like the John Deere got lost. So there's a lot of things that go on this community that we, you know, just the sad that we lose, stuff get lost or stolen, whoever you want to call it. But I mean, this, this is something that has been going on for years, that equipment not working, not upkeeping it. This got to stop. I mean, we got the trucks we wanted, just got them decalled out, looked good. And this was all about presentation. It's all about presentation. We had a vacuum truck, it's not working, not the vacuum truck, but the vacuum. That's not working, try finding another one. This is what we need to put money for, to get these kinds of equipment to this community. This is what we need, this equipment. We have to go out when something break, got to run down to the store four or five times, got to call the company in, we got to be able to have our own problems. And with the pool, again, whatever we want to do, I'm for it. But I think that once we do a survey or get somebody here to evaluate it or look at it, they're going to say, hey, just knock it down and start branding. That's how I feel about that. But other than that, everybody, like, good night. That's all.
Councilman Daniels.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. In the essence of Black History Month, I will start off by saying a quote from Doc King. "The time is always right to do what is right." The time is always right to do what is right. Ms. Schwartz, thank you for the words. Thank you for the conversation. There have been some disparities in this sort of town of Eatonville. Many disparities and we all, we all know about the disparities. And for many, for many years, people set up here on this board and in this community and were silent. If you're not willing to make a difference, then maybe you may be a part of the problem. So that's why it's important for us to speak out. So that's why I do speak out, address a couple of issues real quick. Ms. Novak, you did say, and you are correct, we shouldn't just be, and I just recently had this conversation actually with Attorney and all that, that we shouldn't just be on Facebook. It actually should be on YouTube so it's logged, it's categorized and everything. We should be there. That's where it should be. All of the municipalities have their stuff on to YouTube channel that you can always go back. So now you don't have to inundate Ms. King with public records requests. It's always there. We can go back and watch. You go back and look at the agenda and you go there. And that's why it's important. A lot of times y'all hear me say that I read a lot because I go searching. A lot of times I don't look for things, it falls in my lap. And then when it falls in my lap, I start reading, I start researching and it comes out. So I think that is something that we need to do. Ms. Martin, thank you for coming out and talking about the pool. Along with Councilman Washington, everybody else, I just want what's right for the town. We don't need to be subsisting to everybody else. We need to do what's right. And if it comes to remodeling the pool, building it up, whatever, let's just do it. Let's stop talking about it and let's move forward with it. And with that, on yesterday, I actually received a phone call and I have to bring back towards council. An organization, I won't reveal their name right now, is actually writing a grant towards tennis, for a tennis court, a tennis grant that can possibly over fifty thousand dollars from the U S Tennis Association. It's all about partnerships, knowing people, the money is there, but it's all about who you know and what circles you're running in. I have talked to Attorney Shepherd about impact fees. This impact fees have been going on for quite a while and I have seen no traction. So Attorney Shepherd and I will be coming together for time dense council meeting. Father coming with a resolution to move this impact fee staying forward. Because we constantly say that we want our people to share, but we're not doing our work to make sure this is happening in the right way. Mayor or administration, any update on hunger progress?
No, except that we're waiting, they have thirty days to wait. Kind of thirty minutes, thirty day waiting period.
I know last, one of the last meetings we talked about the seventeen acres. Is the seventeen acres under contract or do we know or anything on that?
I received my information during public records request, so, and I made that request to Orange County.
Mayor, I'm also requesting, I've now been waiting on this. I've been over a year. I have yet to see a budget to actual. And we should be receiving those every month. So I would love to see a budget to actual. And that's why I've been a stickler on some of the voting matters tonight. Is if I don't have a budget to actual, how can I make an informed decision without having all the data? I've been asking for it. I would be asking, I think it is time that we do the workshop, retreat, bringing us all together. But then also, I think we need to get this budget actual very soon. I know we've hired in the CPA. Do we have an update, has she given an information update on her findings and anything?
All right. You go ahead and get it. I'll put in the money.
When we, when we get that, I would love for us, maybe within the next, let's say thirty, forty-five days, we need to do a budget adjustment. We need to look at our budget and we need to make accordingly adjustments. As I told Deputy Chief earlier, I know, I said that we should have hired two more deputies. You don't plan just to have overtime. So you already know you're short when you're planning for overtime. That's, to me, that's, that's just not what you do. We know overtime is going to happen, but we should be planning to have enough competent staff. I just want to continue to remind everybody what went on in Texas, what went on in Columbine, what went on in Parkland. We don't need Eatonville to become that soft target to what's happening in Eatonville. That's why we have to properly plan and make sure we have things in place. Another issue is, I had a resident, I won't call the resident's name, that has been doing some investigating in reference to permits. We have a lot of inconsistency and money issues with permits that certain people will build certain thing when it came down to permits, some people weren't. That's an injustice. We need to get that together. We need to have an electronic system. If there's a code there, if there's a form for it, that stuff should be entered into and it should be, no one should be sitting there calculating by hand what it is. If you know how to do Excel or you know how to buy a program, that's what we need to do. But there have been major inconsistencies when it came down to permits. I'm talking about thousands of dollars, some people not being charged. And that's why we wanted to those issues of, are we taking favoritism or are we doing certain deals for certain people? I don't want to be in that. So I would tell you, Mayor, I would like for someone to really look into permits. I will turn that information over. I need to finish up a conversation with that individual. But they have, they do diligence of finding out that there are major permit issues here in this sort of town of Eatonville. The houses being built, people not being charged, hookup fees, fees overly assessed. That's not right. So we need to do that. I would ask that we remove the M L K sign, put it up on the street coming down the Gally Way. The sign is still there. Martin DePean was a while ago. We need to do that. Finally, I will say that I will be calling a meeting. Julie, I see you here tonight. The N Y and the theory, getting other people. I will be calling a meeting with those individuals who have a vested interest in the town of Eatonville to have a roundtable discussion to see, let's talk. But when we talk, we're going to talk with dignity and respect with each other and we're going to come to a counter call. Had a very wonderful meeting downtown Orlando today with some, some individuals that want to do some stuff in town, but they want to know what are we going to offer? Like they say, they're tired of everybody saying what we can do. But you know, if you can actually do it, you can bring that million dollars. Tell us you can come to that million dollars. There's other questions about a million dollars. But it has to be a form where it's going to be dignity and respect. There's many people, as Mr. Martin, other people, who want to give money to this sort of town of Eatonville. But guess what? We got to have that strategic plan and we have to have a wealth of all to be able to do it. To whom much is given, much is truly required. It has to be required. So the timeout is for all the foolishness and all that kind of stuff. We got to get to work. Our end of form tonight is Dr. King again. Our lives begins to end and they become silent about things that matter, this town matters.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. First of all, I thank Mr. Henderson for his all the presentation comments and his enlightening on the integrity group. Also, I want to thank Mr. Martin for coming. I am a pretty good speaker of character and so you, you are a good man. No one else would say, I will. I know that you are a good man. And I thank you for what you're doing and what you are doing and what you are, aren't guilty for this little black town. I want to thank you for that. I want to say also, I challenge everyone. But Mr. Martin said he wanted to break some people, but some of the kids or some of the others, they, they argue too much. They never get anything done. I challenge you to say, they're not arguing, they're just debating. You have problems in your own way. You're the mom and dad argues, but they still together. We're a great, we're a family and we're not the worst. We can go look at Detroit. My favorite councilman is Eric Mays. If you don't know who he is, go on TikTok and see Mr. Eric Mays. We have a lot of respect for each other, but we're not that disrespectful. And we do have debates. Some people say, I don't know what I say debates. And I challenge you to get more people to come out and witness the debates and get up and talk. Now with that being said, it comes a point of showing respect. One of the major points of Robert Rules of Order is allowing one person to speak at a time. One of our famous historians out here called Pete, said, "We can say together, but we can't talk together." If we allow each other to express their comments, whether it be good or bad, and we can have this debate, it won't seem so combative. And that's what it basically is, just about respect. A lot of them say what they say and we respond back. If we do that, we can debate up here and get our point across. Mr. Councilman Daniels, if you can, the Tennis Association, I don't know if you remember or not. Ms. Tina Waters and I, I think I got with a former recreation director, a real veterinarian, we were trying to utilize that area with the tennis courts and, and we were trying to utilize the basketball courts and refurbishing the tennis courts because Ms. Tina Waters is a part of the Tennis Association. And for those who don't know, she is really a tennis icon here at Eatonville, right here. When I defeated in high school, played along with D B R, what else I shared there. And was definitely a athlete. She was trying to get something done with those tennis courts. So I know, I hear you say you have something going on with the Tennis Association. If possible, can you just give her a call maybe just to see what input she may have or maybe what connections that she may have also? Also, I'd like to thank Mr. or welcome Mr. Presley to our city. I must be honest with you, I think one of the major parts I have with Mr. Singh was his salary. So I, I pull the ball to the bar and I'd like to know how much you make as far as your salary here for the town of Eatonville. All right? Eighty-five thousand. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I also want to say welcome and I look forward to our meeting because one thing about Mr. Singh, he was honest. And I, and I love his delivery. A lot of things he didn't, he told me he was going to do and he didn't get a chance to do it. But I, I look forward to sitting down, talking to you and seeing, hearing your vision and hearing mine so that we can put it together and we're this town for it. So thank you and welcome. Ms. King, I want to thank you also for the good job that you've done and that you're doing. Staff, I think that we, you know, we got a long way to go, but we're in the process of moving forward. Councilwoman Randolph, it was good seeing you at the Heritage Festival, the Eustace. It was a great parade. I think they got us beat maybe on the festival afterwards, but our parade is probably second. Now, they had a great parade, they had a great parade too, but their afterwards, their vendors and stuff, it's something we can desire and we can maybe improve on ourselves. I want to thank y'all for coming out, man, and just keep praying for us. Have a good night.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
You don't have a discussion about videos?
Yes.
Do you want to share that or is it, is it up and running? I don't remember.
Well, the meeting agenda software allows me to integrate a URL or code. So an archive video is up on the website. If you want to go back and view it, it's not live, but you can go back in the archives and view it. It's on our website under council agenda. It'll provide the agenda, the council package, as well as the minutes and the video. I am doing some research that kind of supports what Mr. Novak said in reference to looking at some additional platforms. We, we do have a YouTube channel. That's how I'm able to download an M P four and get a URL. But we have not acclimated that into a live form yet, yes.
I thought we, I thought we.
It's Torio. You can use Torio and it'll integrate all of your social media into one. So you don't have to go back and go all in all. You can use Torio.
Yes, I'm interested in learning some new products and how we can acclimate, get them and incorporate.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We didn't get to where we are in one year. It took decades to get here. And what's, what's frustrating with me is of all the years, this is, it's like since from two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen to now have been the time that we've had the most grants in this town, period. And I'm putting before you a way for us to start accumulating grant funds that are sitting out there, waiting to be received and applied for. And, and we're shuffling, we're shuffling. Maybe if Mr. Singh was here and he presented it, it probably would have passed. But hopefully, you're not stopping this because I'm the one presenting it, number one. Number two, we have already missed out on like three opportunities for a huge grant income. No, everything is not going to be based on grant, but if you've gone from zero grants, pretty much, we, we're past one hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. We're past that. So I'm going to bring it again. I'm like chief. I'm going to bring it back again because it's worth it. And, and I'm asking that you give it a more serious thought. In regards to the water issues of those two properties, one of the, we have an ordinance that states that I own the pipe from my house to the middle of the street. to the middle of the street. And the, so I want to thank Mr. English and Public Works, because the work that y'all were doing, it was in the right way, but it wasn't necessarily our pipe. That pipe extends to the middle of the street, but you stuck in there, and, and that's customer service. Um, so thank you. Juneteenth, you mentioned Juneteenth, Councilwoman Randolph, so this is not a surprise, and you don't think I'm overstepping. I, I just spoke with a couple of people yesterday regarding Juneteenth, that had already started talking to me back, like several, couple of, two, three months ago, about wanting to do a Juneteenth. Um, and they laid out the plans with me yesterday. So I know that you spoke and wanted them, because she knew about the, um, she knew about there might be a conflict of interest on, for the Gospel Fest. So I, but I just want to let you know that I, I've already been speaking to someone about, um, they are putting on the events. The MLK Junior Parade, I, I, the sign, the person that put the sign up is kind of so giving back to us, get that signed out. But they, but Ms. Robinson's been in contact, calling, we're trying to get it, take it back down. I don't think it's something that, um, but I'll, I'll get with Mr., Mr. English. Coming together, coming together while the town falls apart. I'm, I'm trying to put things in place so our town physically doesn't fall apart. You know, we're talking about water, we're going to keep having water issues, people, people have roots in their lines. We have, we have water issues, and the town is not in a position to really help its citizens. You know, but if the administration brings you something that will work, you know, I ask that when you come together, I'm on the council too. That, that you come together, you rally around what I am trying to get done for this town. Um, you know, so we're, we're saying a whole lot, but our actions are not following at all. Um, even, even if you have a concern about something, have that discussion. I've answered every question tonight. I made sure I came prepared. I've answered every question, even the concern from that email, uh, it was addressed clearly. The budget to actual, when we get a cleaner audit, then we can better trust the numbers. So, we're almost like the ordinance. You don't want the rental ordinance until you get the code enforcement. Well, putting numbers before you, and I can't really bet that they're as accurate as they could be, then that's what's holding me up. And I am quite aware of what's in the charter. I mean, this, but it's also even better and, and more important to make certain that what you're, what you're presented with is, 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 you're presented, and we're at a turning point, that we present data that is accurate, as accurate as possible. Because everything is not going to be perfect, I know that. So, um, and I'll get back with you in regards to, um, the CPA working. And she's not just working to look things over, she's also helping to train. Because part of it's just you don't know, and if you don't know, then you teach. Um, the, the quarterly adjustments on a budget, it would be nice if, once we pass that budget, if the administration needs something, then you allow the administration to bring it to you for a bud, budget adjustments. To adjust the budget every four quarters, that, that provides uncertainty. Because then you, you can use the budget, not that you will, but, but you can see the problems that, that could present, adjusting a budget every four quarters. Whereas if it's something that's needed, then at some point, you need to trust the administration to let you know. And then you make your decision based on that. Um, you stated about the homes being built, um, permitting is wrong. I believe those years are several years ago. And I think I know what, so I don't want people to think that we're picking and choosing how fees are paid. It is a da, a data sheet, it, it is a process. Part of it is, Mayor, but we are, um, already instituting a new system. But I don't want anyone to think that something's been, been, uh, sliding. It's not, and a lot of what you're talking about is years ago. Um, and if it's not years ago, then please bring it to my attention so that we can fix it now. But I, I think I know what you're talking about, and we're talking of, you know, at least three, four, five years. And, you know, I, I don't know, but just let us know, and, and we'll see what, what the issue is.
Excellent, Ms. King. And then one other thing, since you said collaboration, now I hear that. Since Ms. Randolph is planning a, uh, a Juneteenth and other people, can we find a way of bridging that together? And maybe they can all work together, and come up with a total, complete project for a Juneteenth, instead of having all these multiple things, and showing everybody in the town?
Well, yesterday when I had the conversation, so I didn't hear you, yesterday I had the conversation, it was mentioned. It wasn't, it wasn't mentioned that you were over it. So I didn't know that until you mentioned it today. It was just that you mentioned it to her.
Let me just get that part straightened out. When we left Macedonia last year.
Yes.
Came back here, I had made an announcement, that Reverend Bishop King wanted to have it over there. Because we want to rotate, you have it on there, and we go back, and it's, since those are the bigger churches that we have.
Right.
I had already put that out there.
Oh, okay.
Now, this other person who contacted me, I gue, I guess it was this afternoon, she, she did mention your name in the email. She wants to speak with me about it, but, um, I want to meet with her.
That's because I bothered your name, because I knew you had mentioned Gospel Explosion.
I had already had put this out here.
That's fine, so, yeah, that's fine.
We can still work together, that's no problem.
So I'm saying, can we just workshop this next meeting, maybe they come together, and y'all come together, and we just pop up in a workshop?
Yeah.
We can be months ahead of time celebrating last month, put that there. Because everybody's getting ready to start launching the Juneteenth projects.
Yeah, the only thing I told her was that when she was ready to, that I would like her to present it to the council for her. This, this was what came to me. It's not me saying, hey, let's, let's do something together. She came to me, and she was organized, she mentioned Gospel Explosion, I thought about you, I asked her, had she spoken with you? And then she told me, that's how I know. So, definitely, you know, reach out and, and talk to her, make that a part of it. All right.
Uh, Mayor, as a point of clarity, you want to workshop that?
Um.
Um, if we do, can we workshop it on the twenty-first, since the seventh is going to be the day of training?
Yeah, well, I would, I would like to wait until they're ready to present.
Oh, okay.
And then that would give her time to get with Councilwoman Randolph.
On what day? What, did you say, March twenty-first?
March, the training is on March the seventh.
Oh, okay.
It's in your cover sheet.
No.
All right, with that, with that being said, everyone have a good night. Oh, I'm looking for a German. It's removed in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Good night.